We come sort of and so that That's what you'll need to do.
To the like of the United States of America and to your Republic where wishes stands my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will evolve now.
President Edward.
Here.
Vice President Ozorik.
Here.
Secretary Zeller.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman. Assistant. Trusty Brady.
Here.
Trusty Lakey.
Yes.
Tracy Zer. Assistant.
I'm not seeing any raised hands in the audience.
Okay, thank you. All right, the presentations capital projects.
So we're going to go through tonight, and we've got two teams that will be presenting to you. Both our bricks and mortar, which comes out of our operations team, and so between Ben and Andy, they're going to do, they're going to start first, and then we'll get into natural capital. Both that'll be part. And we want you to take a look at the list of the projects that are being presented because this is what will advance forward and will put into detail into the budget for the fiscal year. So. Okay, number two guys.
Well, great, so thank you for the opportunity to present. We do this annually for those of you that have been here. We just like to put together a collection of visuals, give a little bit of context, maybe add a little personality to the projects that are being proposed for the upcoming budget year. And specifically the capital asset management planning and the projects that we're talking about historically have been large scale projects, twenty five thousand or over usually. So just keep that in in mind. So yeah, this is a team effort, so Ben, John Kramer and I have worked on this and all we're going to do is we're going to run through this fairly quickly. And before we move to the 2027, which is where we're going to focus most of our time, did want to talk a little bit about the 2026 projects. Mostly because we know that there are some right now that are just starting. You have one on the on the agenda tonight, and again, it's hard to predict whether or not that's going to be finished or whether we're going to have to carry it over. So that's why you'll see some of the numbers between 2026 and 2027, you know, with the asterisks by them. We're still trying to figure them out. This does not talk about, we have accomplished a lot already this year, so this does not include all of the capital projects. Those that have been completed already, like the I'm trying to think of Felpro, Felpro, the plumbing there on both of the shelters, things like that nature. These are ones that, like I said, are just getting started or in progress. Um, so those are regional trails, that's the Prairie Trail Link. That's just engineering for the next phase. It's going to be resurfaced, resurfaced, and that's from Edgewood to Bow Valley. And then, of course, it's the Prairie Trail Wayfinding Plan that you're familiar with, that again, both hopefully will be finished by March thirty first of twenty twenty six, but may have some carryover. The next two, again, we've accomplished some projects or didn't have any, so that's why the zeros, the building and improvements in demo. That's the hollows demo of the main residence. And then additionally, it's one of the full barns that's on Goose Lake off of Clang Road. And then the other project that's in that category is the Prairie View External Stairs that again is on your in your work packet this month to talk about the bid and hopefully move that forward. And then the district wide initiatives. That dollar amount, again, you all know we're in progress and trying to finish that contract up. And so again, some of those dollars will will either be reduced or, you know, because we'll we'll have paid out some of it. Just don't know what that is at this point. That makes sense. Okay. So then 2027, and these are the, these are the new projects for the upcoming year to have you guys take a closer look. And so we'll spend most of our time here, again, just to try to give some consistency to the formatting and how we have them categorized. But then the following slides are a little bit more detailed and some images of those. Again, that's why you'll see the Prairie Trail. We just talked about that, but again, I'm moving both of those forward, but that's why, again, I don't have a zero, I have a zero by them because we don't know exactly how much we'll be moving forward or if at all. Boger, the boardwalk, while it is in 2026, we just will not get to it. And so we are moving that forward. We have taken a look at it, we have assessed potentially, it might be a little bit bigger project, so it is good that we're going to be just putting that on hold, but it is important. It is a critical, it's been deferred for a number of years. Ben and his team were just out there and it has, it's just, it's a wood boardwalk in a wet area with no sunlight. So it's lasted a really long time, put in back in two thousand twenty eight, something like that. So it needs to be done. The roadways and parking projects, again, we have two of them that are cut out and replacement and they're for this facility. And therefore a section in Marengo as much as we can afford to do specifically in the parking or the campground is where it's the worst. Again, both of those have been deferred multiple years. And then Pleasant Valley needs asphalt around. I'm not sure where your gathering was yesterday, but it's, this is the shop that's there right off of Pleasant Valley. And again, just, it's just old and the conditions, it's time, so. I don't think we had anything new added to the district wide at this in 2027, knowing that the forward to 2040 is going to be a huge project. Focus our time on that. And you'll see some of them do have potential for grant funding or we're in the process of looking into that. And then every year we put some money. Again, historically, it's been around forty thousand, so it's just a placeholder for something that we haven't anticipated or comes up as an emergency. Next slide. This isn't coming up very well, so the colors and there's there's text. So we'll anyway, so we'll skip through, we can, we won't skip through them, but you're if you go, if you go back, I'll just talk about the pictures, I guess. We already talked about the dollars or and I can, we can look at those in a different way, but this is the Prairie Trail, again, just some visuals to both of those projects. Both the section that we need to resurface, again, it's over twenty five years old or more. And then just some images of some of our current signage, which is why we're doing the late ninety. Next slide. These are pictures of the current boardwalk at Boger. Again, just so that you can see, they've, some of them have well, yeah, I know them, but I wish they could see them, so.
Yeah, that's strange.
All right, well, that's weird.
I hope I'm hearing you, I'm looking mine.
Yeah, yeah, so again, not to talk too much about it, but you can see what happened for, I don't know, it's a pier and a bridge that we put on the edge of the wetland community and it has pins, helical pins and heads that that way then did not disturb any of the hydrology. What we think is happening is just that it's, you know, it's, it's, yeah, yeah. And so we think we can, again, the decking and the wood, like I said, is rotting. So it is now becoming more of a full, full scale replace, but in the same alignment. So this is a nature preserve. So again, we need to be very cognizant of of that, not making any changes, but just putting back in what was there. I open the attachment.
So this is, this is just some examples, you mentioned of the asphalt replacements, cutouts that are coming up, cutout replacements at two locations. Those are going to be kind of in preparation for a larger scale overlay coming, you'll see in twenty eight, twenty nine later on in the presentation. The the worst section here is the Pleasant Valley Maintenance Shop. Those are most of the pictures there that are really breaking up in several locations in that that parking lot shop facility. To the point where it needs to be completely redone or we won't be able to even follow it this way or we'll just be.
You can put that permeable stuff in like we have it with some neighbors?
No, it'll just be asphalt again. So that's, that's the asphalt projects. And then buildings, so here you have examples, we go to the men's side, please, okay, we have some examples of a couple. There we go, a couple of the building projects that we're getting around the list, bottom left there is the stairs at Prairie View that is, you're staying here this week or tonight. And then again, at the end of the month, approval for that bid, that that'll be hidden place this fall hopefully. And then in next year, twenty six, fiscal year twenty seven, will be painting here at the Brookdale. You can see that's a picture of the A frame in the top left, the paint is definitely fading there. All the buildings need a paint job, so we have that part here for in camp as well as review of the cedar shaped roof on the Powers Waterhouse.
This one I'll, oh, you gotta go back, it's going faster here. There we go. I'll talk and Ben will talk. I just wanted to mention, this is our the unanticipated as well as the district wide and the, and a great example of what we were able to accomplish of something that was unanticipated was the avian mitigation of the power lines. That's why I have that picture there is it as just an example. Now, we ended up in that case not needing to have funds ourselves because Con Ed covered the cost. But again, that's an example of, again, just being able to pivot, you know, with with some of this. And I'm trying to think of what else we had that we were working on this year with some unanticipated, just as an example for those.
The lower roof, replacement, the two roofs, the pretty roof and the shelter roof at Boger Bog, the clay tile roofs are going to be replaced. This year was not necessarily budgeted for, but have broken up and deteriorated. We're going to be able to get those repaired, replaced this year. As Elizabeth saw this afternoon, we had bubbling septic out in the yard there, we just noticed, so things like that pop up. We don't have them budgeted for, hopefully that's just a simple fix on a pipe. We'll find out tomorrow, but if it becomes a bigger septic issue, then then we have those ones available to handle projects like that when they come on.
While you put your septic on the backside of the building.
So this is obviously the longer, bigger picture, the forecast. And so I like this slide the best because I feel like I can't get this wrong. I'm like a weatherman, right? I can, you know, I can be, I can be off a little bit. The other thing that's that's going to change, because we know it will change, is the forward to forty plan, you know, is anticipated to be completed in February of twenty twenty seven. So that really, it has a, going to potentially have a big impact on this list. But it's nice to have this list to let everybody know that we do have, these are, you know, this, this is the schedule of what these maintenance needs are, these larger projects and that we keep track of that in a five year, a ten year, you know, schedule of of roofs, of asphalt. They have, they have a lifespan and we are, you know, take that into consideration that help and guide these budgeting, these large scale budgeting initiatives. So again, we can, this, what we have on the list, again, are those sections of Prairie Trail that will be engineering, you know, in one year and then the resurfacing or replacement in the next. What we hope to be able to do then is by that time we'll have the wayfinding plan in place. And so we can start, you know, combining those, putting in the new signs from a new plan in with these sections that were addressing from a maintenance standpoint and the use of efficiencies of of time and money, hopefully maybe more grant funding coming that way.
I was excited to see the Hebron Trail. We are on that site where that.
I think I put it in every year. No, it's not just, we will all be really pleased to keep that, get that finally, yes, solved, implemented and in the rearview mirror, right? So, but that too, again, is, you know, it's, it's a little ways out. There's obviously a lot of studying and, you know, some planning to do, needing some funding. But yes, it's, it's been on our priority list, but again, we'll find out where it sits with the rest of the community. Right, the, the construction area project, Marengo Ridge, again, is a really well loved, but an older site. Again, this is something that's been deferred, so the main parking there, it again has old asphalt. It has just a awkward circulation. It's not completely ADA. We can't, you know, do one little part without just going ahead and doing, so it always ended up being a larger project. Then there's probably some efficiencies to adding it to the rest of the work at Marengo Ridge from an asphalt standpoint. So we would look at how how to combine projects.
Rowways parking projects, again, Beck's Woods, main campground, HMA resurfacing. That is, I think, asphalt that's been probably in place for twenty five, thirty years. I don't think it's ever been redone since, since I've been around. So that's just one that is in in some need of getting redone. Brookdale, again, we're going to do some patchwork ahead of time and then and then do a complete resurface down the road in twenty eight, twenty nine. And then you can see, you said that Marengo Ridge, Thomas Woods, we're doing some patchwork in twenty seven. And then again, in preparation for the, for the full resurface, a year or two down the road. As far as building improvements demolition projects, there's, we have a litany of buildings that are on our demo list, and those well, so we're going to
Sixty three of them.
Sixty three, we're going to start. Sure, hopefully start picking off some of those, we're trying to concentrate on the ones that may cause the most problems with, you know, being close to the road and visibility and things like that. And I think, you know, just problems from from an outside perspective. So we'll start picking off a few of those. Let's see, the Agribo shop has got some serious structure issues with the roof. Not just the, not just a replacement of the shingles, but some other serious structure issues. So we've had a study on that. Again, not something that's dire at this point, but it will be, need to be addressed sooner than later. LVC retaining wall is another one that's been on on the docket for a while. That's on that back, the backside of LVC on that back sidewalk. You see those old railroad ties are just kind of starting to fail and slop off, so we want to get that taken care of. O'Gurick is another demo project. Silver Creek, the the barn at Prairie View there off the corner of the parking lot, again, has some pretty significant roof issues. So we're looking to take that barn down and then get the Kennedy Way Station House, the Kennedy House painted on the exterior.
I see the Kennedy thing is, at least on the spreadsheet, it's on twenty nine.
Yes, this is fiscal year twenty nine.
Yep, it was twenty eight, twenty nine.
Can it go that many more years without paint? I mean, it's there, it's pretty there.
So this is part of the conversation tonight, you know, if the board wishes to move something up or feels like it's the appropriate to reprioritize.
It just, it seems to me there's two things. One is is that that should probably be moved. And and the other thing is, I think, of the, whatever, we haven't decided what we're going to do with McConnell barn, but we ought to put something somewhere on here from unless, unless it's got a different name. And I'm not, not seeing it.
You're not missing it, it's not there.
Okay, yeah, it seems to me we should add something more just to, yeah. Show that we've at least been talking about it and thinking about it. We don't know what to do.
Well, we did, right, we did put money in last year, again, just for those of you that weren't here, so. But yes, it is part of the conversation of, you see all of the other things that, you know, we have to do and prioritize, so.
Yeah, I don't know, what, anybody else comment?
First, I, because I'm, my husband's a lawyer, so clients stumble over broken asphalt, trip, you have a lawsuit. So my first thought is make sure we have things that don't create liability scores. I mean, that's I forget number one.
Yeah, right, so that's.
And this is a multi-year, so when we show the camp, right, the, the one that's really given into the budget is the fiscal year twenty twenty seven. Those are the ones that we're allocating and knowing, like was mentioned, some of the overflow that are not getting accomplished this year. But as we complete that forward to twenty forty plan, I mean, staff has good intentions. We know the maintenance items that are deferred and then there's going to be this inquiry of save this, we want this, we want to see this. And that all has to be prioritized and so we will not have that. We're just starting that process. So if there's something, staff has done an assessment, if there was something in a critical path that was at risk, I guess that's important for that conversation, like painting, that needs to go forward.
Or maybe, maybe something from McConnell, like an assessment, to hire a consultant to say, what would it take to save this structure, something? Just to put some money in there, because part of my concern is, I know we're being recorded, but, you know, is when we get to talking about the, you know, we're getting public input. That group has been very vocal, they, and for us to show, here's our three year plan and we didn't even we didn't consider them, how it's going to look to them, it seems to me.
If I can jump in though, Elizabeth, as I think, this is a forecast, so I really, I really wish we were focused on these, these years and we really were. I mean, it's good, like Elizabeth said, to move, look at it, so if there's something that we need to be moving forward, but we do have to put it in perspective of the twenty twenty seven year, knowing that yeah, twenty twenty eight is going to probably look a lot different because it is going to have that overarching, you know, multiple user groups coming and saying, you know, here in that plan will help, right, give twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine.
I think it looks a lot better if I have something there, at least a placeholder to say, look, we have been thinking about it, we're talking about, we're not a judge issue what to do. But it's something that we recognize. Right now, if if any group were to look at this and say, well, you don't even talk about it, where is it? It's not in your planning horizon.
Ignoring. Right, so you could put something in general, whether it's specific or for historic structures, or to leave just a placeholder that how that's going to be vetted amongst all, since is part of the process with Upland Design and the architect that is part of them, is they are going to look at the historic facilities and they are going to give some general assessment to us. So we will have that. We don't have that today, they're just getting started, John. I know we're not talking about that, but the timeline or any, maybe when is there, on that cycle, what is the timeframe of them getting out to review the buildings?
Oh, you're, I looked at so many dates and I'm going to, I do believe that assessment will begin in the January timeframe. I think it was January to July or something like that, they'll be doing those kinds of assessments. We're going to get out of that a rough idea of what are we facing with all of our, and I call them historic structures. They're not going to go in there and give us the point by point, the, what would cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do at just a McConnell, and it would be at least that. They're not going to give us that, but they are going to take a look at the estimates we we put together. They are going to look at, hey, did you think of this and this and this, and possibly there's some cost to go to that. Now, Lloyd, to your point, the district has stabilized the house there. It has a chicken coop stabilized, okay, in terms of it's got a good roof on it, siding is okay, we recently painted the McConnell house. So to us, those are stabilized. When you start going to those other buildings, throw a dart at a wall, we're coming up with what might be a cost to do that. If you wanted to say we want a specific assessment of this, this building, we can go out and get that kind of, you know, we can find an architecture firm to come in and do that kind of thing. I'm hoping that we get something from Dewberry, the company that would be working with Upland on this, that will come back and say, that we can come out and say to you folks, okay, this is really what we're looking at, at here. And here should be our focus in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. Right now, we don't know what that should be. I mean, all of those buildings need a lot. And to get something from some experts coming back saying, this is where your focus should be, one year from now, we might be in a situation to be able to address exactly what you're looking. If you want us to move forward with something, we could go out and get an assessment, we could go get a proposal from an architecture firm to do that.
I'm not, I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying, I think we should have something, their name should be on here, that we've at least considered it, where you don't know what to do yet. Put ten thousand dollars in, it just.
You know what we can do pretty easily? If that would be, we have an estimate for painting the chicken coop. It was, we, when, when it was quoted or bid last year, we actually said, give us an alternative on that. It came up with a number, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but we could throw that in there for the twenty twenty eight timeframe and say, you know, hey, we'll add that in.
I just, I just think it helps, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe.
No, I agree, I agree.
It's an easy add, and it's not something we're budgeting for. It allows us to get through that entire comp plan and then we would be, a year from now, we have that sitting there saying, okay, did you folks really want to do this? Did you want to paint those?
Or you could even do like a TBD, I saw you at a TBD on some of the wayfinding, you know, just, I think to Lloyd's point, it's just a placeholder so everyone realizes, especially Ben, Mark, Illinois, you know, that we are considering something.
All right, well, we can, we can take that advice back and do something.
It's really just until we know what to do. What to do.
All right, thank you.
Uh, so the only other thing that we didn't talk about in the forecast of twenty twenty eight, twenty nine, then is that final column of, again, district wide forward to comp plan, forward, forward to twenty forty. I'll let Ben talk about the field jobs.
Yeah, the, the shops for field staff right now are just traditional P locks. Where we would like to put card, swipe card system, combination system in at the shops just for added security. We can program those when when staff changes, seasons come on, they leave, we can take their numbers out. We can tell who exactly who's coming when, so we'd like to do that with the shops. And then again, the last thing up there you see is the Hebron Trail Railroad, I'm crossing.
So just for a clarification, too, I just want to make sure, so we had heard that the exterior painting for Brookdale, this is scheduled for fiscal year twenty nine, so we're just doing fiscal year twenty twenty seven budget. Do you want to show that to move up to next year or the year after, and the same thing with McConnell? What is the fiscal year?
I'd like to pull.
Put it both in fiscal year twenty twenty seven. So this upcoming year.
Okay, so then we will probably will need to ask Andy about what our threshold is and if something then has to shift, right, and get moved back.
Right, we'll need to take that under.
Make a change, make, make a change.
Back to the board, we have on the twenty third, we'll take a look at that and we can kind of share what's moved to do that, or we do a little bit more, going a little bit deeper into funding, just to have that. So, thank you for the clarification, so we'll make this move.
We're down to just, questions?
Thank you.
More questions? Yeah, for it.
I was just wondering if you're seeing the cost of this kind of work increasing a lot this year in in labor and materials? And are there certain buckets of work that you're seeing increase more than others?
Yes, great question. I, I'm, I'm seeing about forty percent in some cases.
Yeah.
Of, of, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not, we're not seeing, like, you know, like a two by four is not doubling price or anything like that for us, but, but I know that we've been in contact with some of our HVAC contractors, for example, and there's a, there's a change in the freon that is causing some issues and they're going to see some inflated prices for that, I think it was forty percent was the number I saw on that. That is causing some issues and they're gonna see some inflated prices for that up of, I think, was forty percent was the number I saw on that too. So. Um, not not drastic. A lot of what we do is is more the service. It's not usually a lot of materials, at least from our end. Amy's Amy's is a little bit different on her side, probably, but. You know, what we're we're paying poppointing and um, painting and things like that. When we start getting into asphalt. And then that's a different, different animal, but but um, the service related thing, they're not seeing a tremendous in that.
Yeah.
So higher prices have come way down, right? Down like four. Housing starts, usually, normal housing starts are about a million a year. And right now, the current run rate is like closer to half a month. So that's that's freed up a lot.
But but a good point to be made too is because we have so much deferred, which why we went forward with the proposition. Is the cost of demo demolished buildings that have been sitting, it's only has gotten more expensive for us to take care of these assets. Because we haven't been able to take care of them. So it may have seemed like we're keeping things in check, but it's gonna cost more now to bring them back to. And you still feel like you're. Planning on a very tight budget, isn't it?
Yes. We're gonna go back to the um, twenty twenty seven side.
I would I would say of a real example of, I just noticed this one. I think Amy has a hundred and seven thousand dollars sitting on the. Retaining wall replacement at Lost Valley Visitor Center. When I first saw that, probably five or seven years ago. It was ninety thousand.
Yeah, that was yeah. And that was with some push.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's gone up. It's gone up.
Asphalt, concrete, um, railing, you know, material, um.
Maybe you've already done something like this, but it might be interesting. As an exercise to. Look at all of this and and as well as you can with your crystal ball, give it a like a green, yellow or red of. If you anticipate the cost getting to be a lot higher. And if it's in like a red zone, maybe we try to do that sooner. As opposed to three years from now, the cost will be a lot higher. I mean, just a factor with how you prioritize.
Great.
You probably don't even think about that.
We do, um, and the color code is a great thing. But yes, it we do. So on our on our larger ten-year plan, at least for the sites. Again, uh, we'll use asphalt. It does come with a lifespan. We know how, when it was put in, when it was last, you know, um.
Crack filled.
Crack filled or sealed and, you know, so we are keeping track of it. We could do more of that and we could share some of that, but it it does, it does um, factor into this this plan. Um, there's all kinds of, right, factors, but yes, absolutely.
And then my question was around these grant funding opportunities. Have you like applied for them or maybe share some information and where? Someone asked.
Yes, for sure. So some of it, they're all in different phases. Um, so um, just with this one of twenty twenty seven up on the screen. Um, the Prairie Trail Wayfinding Plan does have a grant. Um, we were awarded um, three hundred thousand dollars um, for this project through um, the. Um, well, it was through the Transportation um, Department. Um, so we, yes, we have applied for that and we. We have a whole other side of just, we could just do grants um, at some point to let you know where they all are because it it does get a little um. Um, you know, sort of mixed up, but so we have that one. Um, as well as the work for the. New sections of trail that we want to resurface, the one that we just finished up had a art, had an RTP grant. Um, we have um, these are state funding, um, IDNR um, funding. Um, and off the top of my head, I think that was around two hundred thousand dollars. So the the ones upcoming could do the same thing. There's also bike trails. Um, so we haven't applied for any of those yet. Because we're not in that process yet. First, we need to, we need to get a plan. Um, and that seems to be a better way of 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 getting a grant. Some grants. Do include um, engineering services along with the construction. But again, just with this timing and the staffing that we have available, we just thought that was, again, um, just a strategy that we that we've done. Um. Uh, the, John, do you wanna talk more about the opportunity of funding for the comprehensive master plan?
Yeah, it was uh, it was discussed briefly the other night. I think all the trustees were there. Um, Sean and I had a a discussion uh. Yesterday afternoon, I believe it was, where we kind of mapped it out uh, on, you know, who's doing what. It's due the fifteenth of Oc- of October. I believe we'll know by December whether we're funded or not on that. Um, and we're gonna start working together on getting that out there. Um. Shauna is very, is is very much like me. We're very practical in terms of we don't apply for grants that. We don't think we have a really good shot to get. We don't throw, we don't throw, you know, darts at, you know, in a pond. We're we're. Kind of targeting that. So I think that one's in pretty good shape. As Amy pointed out, a couple of those projects on there. I believe it's the Two Prairie Trail Projects. Those renovation projects are grant fundable. The cycle for the grant isn't until the spring. So right now, Amy and her team are working to get a a get a plan. That's what we need. We need no cost estimates. And and the two of us chatted just briefly about it a a couple of weeks ago, kind of off the cuff. Maybe we should be looking at submitting those uh, projects or at least one of those, because we know they are fundable. I don't see anything else on that that a a grant agency would be chomping at the bit to fund. Um, they they're not typically repair and replacement. They are, as Amy pointed out many years ago, they will renovate the trail. They're not just interested in in putting down a new uh, man of asphalt. So. Those are some of the grants that I think are out there. And then we have some that we have applied for. That were for projects that would have been on the, probably in the beyond, you know, beyond the this timeframe. But we, we don't know whether those are are gonna be awarded or not. We did kind of throw darts uh, at those products, so. Um, and then the other thing is that I I heard it discussed this the other day. Abe was talking about mapping. Grants for the next year. That was one thing I I took a little note, said I need to down with Amy and map that out as well. So we know what we're trying to target when.
Three years.
Lined up.
We need to update that. But just to add to that, um. The Hebron Trail, um, that's a potential um, grant funded, but that would be larger. So that's ITAP. And and that would include um, phase one engineering. You need that for anything moving forward to be able to get. Um, more opportunities. So that's a bigger, uh, more transportation. Um, but McDat is very interested in helping with that. Some of these projects, um, we have tried for grants. Um, and that's somewhat why they didn't get done. So it's. Sort of to your point, another way of strategizing is looking at those that, you know, do hit the yellow maybe.
Yeah.
But they're um, they're grant fundable. So then they get into the, you know, we gotta go for this now. Um, and then when we don't get the money or we don't get the grant. Then it falls back to the bottom of the, you know, of the list again. And so here we are. And so um. The LVBC retaining wall is a good example of that type of we, we have an engineering plan sitting on a shelf. We applied for a grant. We didn't get it. We've applied for grant money for Hebron Trail. Again, just. Didn't, we weren't in a place and and didn't and didn't qualify for it. So we keep trying. So and and along with the list of, you know, of the mapping. It would be nice to be able to show you what what we have tried and what we've tried multiple times and you just keep. Plugging away at it. So we have some good opportunities.
Yeah, and I can speak to it. If there's a grant opportunity that's aligned and trying to do, we've been stretching that dollar, we're all over it. Um, and again, everybody's working collaboratively. I think that outlook of a full year of what grant opportunities and to map that will help the board understand. What's going into all of that and that we are seizing opportunities. And and there, we talked about there may be some others that are available. We just haven't pursued. But we haven't had a project that we've been working on, you know, kind of the here and now with that that longer three-year look. But there may be some things that need to start a little bit earlier on.
Well, when John Snowmobile, we've also been very helpful with helping other user groups get grants that we don't. Don't miss this, or they can't get without us. Um, so the Snowmobile, um, is a great. Um, uh, just example of of those efforts.
Are they good about giving feedback when you don't get a grant? On why it wasn't awarded?
We, I certainly always ask, as I believe John always asks.
Is it usually just timing and like lots of other applicants and?
That sometimes, um. At least I try to stretch a little bit and, you know, ask for maybe something that John wouldn't ask. And so sometimes it comes back and it's like. You know, we just didn't qualify for one, you know, one little checkbox, you know, wasn't, this didn't qualify. Not that it wasn't a good project, but yes, most of the time it's just competitive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Like, there's a cycle, like the OzLab grant, which is one of the things that we've always, if we apply, we've been successful in getting it. I don't know if there's been an OzLab, John could speak in our history, that we haven't received with OzLab, but it does also come with. This expectation that you have to have new improvements and things open and then it's more costly. And so. We've been in a mode of managing and maintaining. It's difficult to just keep adding. So it's a catch twenty two of.
Yes.
Lots of layers.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So for this list, everybody's good. The twenty twenty seven um, that's up on the screen here with the addition of. We will add McConnell and the Kennedy Way Station into the mix here. We'll find, we'll come back. Uh, do you want the twenty third?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to the source, I'm going to the embedded one.
A little nervous face on that.
I know, me too. I didn't.
It worked earlier, ran it twice.
All right. Hopefully we got an exciting presentation for you here tonight. Here we got some trivia for you, Lloyd.
All right.
Hopefully it's a little bit harder than last time. Paul was all over the Nipper Sink one. A little more difficult. There you go. Under camp, under the camp fund, Amy and Ben did a good job explaining all of their capital projects. But under there is the Natural Capital Improvement Plan. And we do this annually as well. Uh, one good benefit about these natural resource type projects is we can. A little bit more agile on the planning. Uh, obviously, if a roof's leaking or something like that, that needs to be addressed right away. But if it's a restoration project. And there's not a grant requirement that's already associated with it, we could push it out. So what you're gonna see here tonight is us adjusting our projects uh, due to the cash flow situation and that abatement. So we're gonna look, some of the projects that were originally planned here into future fiscal years. So big uh. Because these are specific to land improvement. They're not equipment or anything like that. So tonight I'm gonna go over the progress of some of the fiscal twenty six projects and then look at our uh, planning for twenty seven to twenty nine. Next slide. This is the twenty six plan, so you click through. I'm gonna go over these two projects here, the reallocation of the Underwood at Glacial Park. So that project just got completed, so we get some. Real time photos of that and then cover a project I'm really excited about seeing finished, but but. How we got to this, so then I'll go over this, that sixty three thousand, which finishes off the C-suite. Project. And as I alluded to, we're gonna move that sixty five thousand Who's Lake Water Reserve request into twenty eight. We did move it from twenty six to twenty seven, but uh, we can wait to twenty eight to do that. And then uh, the last one is.
What is big, can you say it again?
I'll go over it. Okay. I just wanted to give you the high level of of what the plan is, and then I'll go into detail on all these. And on the question mark here, this is one that was on the plan previously, and I don't know if we're gonna end up needing this, and I'll go into more detail. But we currently have a research project that we're starting. At North Branch, and we're trying to figure out the most efficient way to do some of these reforestation projects. We certainly haven't cracked it, but uh. Cracked a nut, that's your joke. But anyway, um, the the way that we've done these reforestation projects so far has been doing actual planting, which is really good for getting the public involved. But we just wanna see if there's a more efficient way to do it. So we're, Tom Simpson is gonna be doing a research project associated with. A seeding, a, so you probably saw that on the Facebook page, uh, do doing some revests and that's what that's all about. So that twenty eight is kind of a question mark. Anyway, this is Nipper Sink Phase Five, so we finally finished the Nipper Sink Restoration. Twenty-five years worth of effort. We couldn't finish that uh, last ditch because of the property ownership. Uh, which previously was owned by a private individual, was picked up by Openlands. And you probably heard the Friends of Hackin Tech project where we had the Senator Underwood funding. It took a while for that to come through, but uh. We matched a hundred thousand of that for that joint project. And then in your. Board packet, we're trying to do a reimbursement grant for that as well with uh, seed reimbursement. So we still have to do the seeding phase of this project, but the dirt work is done. So this is a picture looking to the southwest. You can see kind of where that ditch was. And this is the Restoration Ecology Team remandering that stream. The next photo is gonna be looking the other way. So that's. Us finish the stream. You can see the grade control riffle right there where the the green is, that's duckweed that's kind of held back. I got a pointer. Just. Point right there. Uh, so that's the grade control riffle for the marsh. And then this is the remander back to the Nipper Sink through this red prairie marsh. Anyway, this is the open land side, so they did some grade control checks right here, right here, and then building that ditch. So this is all rehydrating. Really cool for the Nipper Sink Valley. So that's that project. Next one. Here's your trivia. Any idea what this map is about? We got a lot of dots around St. Paul, Minneapolis, a lot of dots around Chicago, Madison, Milwaukee. Cedar Rapids, the mine. And I guess is.
What's S, G, C, N?
Oh, I can't. Give you a little uh, guy here. They help you out. Normally, when you see dots around uh, cities, it's usually human population, right? But this is not human population. This is actually the range, current range of Rusty Patch Bumblebee.
Uh-huh.
So, yeah, it's it's kind of, kind of crazy, but it shows the power of these urban natural areas. And I'm I'm a really big fan of the Rusty Patch Bumblebee story because it really shows the efforts. Of the Conservation District and other uh, open state districts around these suburban spaces. It also shows. The issues that are happening with the neoninventoids on these ag lands because. You can see in Iowa, you know, there's there's not much other than those areas where there are uh, people. So, good story, bad story, but that's what this map is. And the big project, we call it the C-Swing Project, which stands for Predator State Wildlife Grant. And you need to apply through the federalism process through a state government. So the district partnered with, you can go to the next slide, partnered with. The Wisconsin DNR to do this grant. I have a lot of people I need to um, do shout outs for this one. The first one is Cindy Dublonsky. Uh, I I put this project on her kind of last minute in order to to get this done. She did a lot of research on the life cycle of the bumblebee. And what we found is this stage right here, uh, when the bream emerges from the winter. That there's a lot of, there's a lack of floral resources for that emergence. So we really uh, worked hard. Cindy Dublonsky Wildlife Ecologist worked with Lori Ryan, our Plant Ecologist, to focus on increasing our floral resources uh, for this project. And the uh, Fish and Wildlife really appreciated the work and the strategy towards this C-Swing Grant. Next slide. And then two more big shout outs. One is Shauna. So. You can see all of these. These are the batch dollars that we use for this grant. And we we did a number of different uh, funding projects in order to leverage this hundred thousand dollars from the federal government, which is also a partnership with Wisconsin DNR. Uh, so a ton of effort there. The total figure for this project is two hundred sixty-six thousand. And uh, brought in a hundred and eighty-eight of external, so that the camp. Funding helped us get there. And that was a hundred sixty-three, so seventy percent was grant or donation batch. So that's a, that's a big deal, Shauna. And the other person that needs a huge shout out is Gigi Gerstbrandt. She she worked with me many hours to make sure that we were doing this legit, and so, and with the timing and the funding and everything. So, last, last one is just the Restoration Ecology Team for getting this done. But this is the project. That we did with Wisconsin DNR. This is their project area. So they did a lot of patchwork and it shows their uh, conservation opportunity area. And then you guys recognize that Hackin Tech. And then there's the Zoom window project. So there's no longer any. Uh, agriculture, row crop, at Glacial Park, everything's a natural habitat. Uh, or that species, and that's where those Rusty Patch projects were. So, really cool and uh, good funding opportunity. Okay, so for the twenty seven plan, I kind of alluded to this, but we're, the only thing that we're asking for is. Okay, so for the 27 plan, I kind of alluded to this, but we're, the only thing that we're asking for is this reappropriation. This reappropriation is for, uh, engineering that we, we may need for the Kishawaki project. So, uh, you haven't heard it yet either, but we, we presented that mitigation proposal and doing engineering for potential future water mitigation. And this was just if we run into issues associated with, uh, floodplain mapping, we may have to do a letter of map revision, which is a process that we haven't done, many additional engineering and surveying. That will, uh, will know that during the permitting process. So there's $25,000 we may not use, but we want it there just in case so that if we need to move forward, it, it's, it's there for permitting, so we're not, uh, back a, a year. So that's that one. And then everything else is starting in 28. So I'm going to go through each one of these, we'll talk a little bit about the Kishawaki banks, both in 28 and 29. One thing I do want to mention is LPNR cannot handle two banks at, at one time. So we really need to get sign off on school springs before, if we want to move forward on a bank, um, doing that at Kishawaki. So that's kind of something that we're planning through, but, uh, these are the, the placeholder, they're there because we're in that engineering phase right now. This is Gabe's best guess, uh, but didn't want to have those on the plan in case we do get school spring sign up in advance though. So we'll go in through each one of these projects in a little more detail. First one is, as I mentioned, is that Goose Lake Prairie construction. We'd like to do a high diversity prairie there because it's fantastic location for a future seed collection. As I mentioned, we moved from fiscal year 27 to 28 with a $65,000 camp request. Next two is where this is located, so Goose Lake, it's all been restored except for this piece right here. So this is the piece that we're looking at, go ahead and click and it'll show up. Uh, and you have good access right here. So it's a, it's a spot that we can do quality seed collection, uh, diversity, easy access to, uh, for staff. Excellent. This is the question mark that I had, so if everything works out well, uh, we've been working with Shauna, uh, potential grants for next year fiscal year 27. And we may be able to accomplish this project to our special revenue fund. And I even need to draw on the camp fund in 28. And we're hoping that we can do it in fiscal year 27, but a lot of it's going to depend on that research project that I mentioned at North Branch. See if we want to try and do another, uh, acorn seeding. So this is a question mark, but didn't want to keep it on the plan in case we needed to have that for the herbaceous vegetation. And click through twice, you'll see where this is at. This is Barbara Fen, Nipper Sink Creek, Els and Parcels up here, next one. Boger Fen, this project was, uh, the engineering was funded through the foundation in 2023. And we've had this project in our special revenue fund since 2024, 24, 26. And we're going to put it there again this year. And if there is an opportunity, we'll work closely with planning, possibly have a joint project that we could, could move forward if there is grant funded available with that boardwalk and the restoration project. If that doesn't happen, then we would look for a camp request in fiscal year 28. And the reason that this is half the price of the other one, this is for contractors to do this work. And this is if we would do it in-house, it would be our staff giving work. But I am going to still budget for fiscal year 27, the rest of the revenue, if we are getting grant funding, but if not, we're looking at it.
Is that boardwalk project associated with the, trying to do here, um, make it 80 compliant? I mean, I, I, I really recognize the boardwalk as if for other, other reasons, but it's not 80 compliant?
No, the, the access to it can't be made without a lot of, um, impacts to the nature of the turf.
Exactly.
But the rest of the site is.
Boardwalk's out in this area. And then the, the big cost for that for us is actually going to be the matting. We don't have enough mats, we're going to have to rent mats because, um, as Amy mentioned, this is a nature preserve and it's kind of wet right now. But all these headwater streams are in size, so we need to bring the water table up. So we need to put in a bunch of different ripples, but we're going to have to run on mats so that it won't impact the resource. So it's going to be kind of a sensitive project, but, uh, that's where we would be working and it's different than the Boger. But if there is a grant that we find, there may be an opportunity to work together on that one. So that would be for 27 camp requests, next one. All right. If we decide to move forward with the mitigation bank, that'll be a future discussion, but just wanted to give real quick overview because we're talking about planning here, the camp request out, reallocation for fiscal year 27 is on there. And then one thing that worked really well was school springs that we want to do in the future is this pre-prep. So a seeding ahead of our construction, it was phenomenal in school springs and just really allowed that site to explode and got a jump in, um, to the restoration. So for fiscal year 20 had, 20, 28 ahead of 29, uh, we would do that, that, uh, site preparation. So 70 acres of rough clearing and around 140,000, 1,200,000 for that initial seeding, uh, ahead of construction, which as of right now, we're thinking could be as early as 29. And then, uh, mitigation bank construction, these are my numbers, Gabe's numbers. We still have to go through what that engineering looks like, but, uh, we have additional seeding, 250 contractor management left for the first growing season. And then as you, as you know, those mitigation banks are a lot of effort, so we, it costs a lot more than other restorations. And then construction materials at 300, and then again, my asterisk there is, those are Gabe's estimates, yes.
Would they qualify for mitigation bank credits?
Yes, and next slide.
Oh.
So this is something that we presented when we went forward with the engine, engineering, I think it was about a year ago. And this is the conceptual plan, so the wetland mitigation section is right about here. And the next slide is going to show you, don't flip, flip yet, but the next slide will show you where those credits are. The stream component, so we would be removing water flow from the Kishawaki River in this ditch, egg ditch here, and then putting it back into its original channel, which is the blue. So originally we thought that we would be able to give 13,000 feet of stream credit. Good news, bad news. The good news is when we did our, uh, biological inventories ahead of the project to get baseline, it was really good. We had some listed species, so we're not going to get a lot of biological lift. But I'll show that in another slide. Real quick here, we'll do wetlands, so the next, next, next click is going to show what the wetlands are. So we could just do the wetland proportion, proportion of this mitigation project and not do the stream. And these are the figures that we would get off of the high end, so these are maximum. It will be less than this, but around 40 acres of enhancement, so all the blue is enhancement. This 20 acres of red is rehabilitation, so that would be half credit, 50%. And those are foreign wetlands, so currently have functioning as wetlands. And then the green would be reestablished, where you could get full credit for mitigation at that 47 acre figure. So it's still a significant, uh, bank, but it's 10 times the size of school springs. So if, if we move forward with a bank, you're going to, we're going to come aboard with a pretty aggressive plan that we would need in order to, to complete this project because it's, it's massive. Uh, next slide. So this, just to get a, a framework of, of what the core is looking at for stream mitigation in particularly, they want to have, uh, increase in value, increase in function. So it's not really just looking at acreage, but it's, it's meeting this stage five, this top level, specifically focusing on bi- biology. So when you have high quality biology for you to do your restoration project, you're not going to show a lot of functional lift. And part of that is because of where we are in the landscape. When you're that far down in the watershed, of course, it's going to be, uh, showing what is everything, what's reflective of everything upstream, right? So just because it's a ditch there, doesn't necessarily mean that that's identifying the quality of the entire watershed. So if there's a headwater stream, it'd be a completely different story. But anyway, what we would discuss with the core, and this has to go through permitting, so you're just hearing from Gabe and, and my perspective here. Um, no one at federal level has agreed upon this, is we would get functional lift right here in the geomorphology because we're going to have increased vet farm diversity, we're going to have increased meanders, uh, increased ratios of, um, habitat. So there is going to be a lift, but it's not going to show up here in the biology. So how we accomplish that and how we get that lift is going to be the discussion that we're going to have with the, uh, Army Corps on this project. So I do think it's going to be less than the figures I showed you a year ago because of how good the biology is, which is why we preserved it, so it's, it's not bad. And this is just the summary of the proposal that we have been for you, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
This was a guide for your bumblebees, by the way, in the back, because if you're like me, you struggle a lot. Very handy, but.
We were at the water, while we were at a meeting where we discussed watershed, uh, planning. So do you register them with the county when you do these things? Or how, how are they going to work it so that they know that you're working on the watersheds? Well, does that come into play at all or?
I don't understand the question.
So the county's going to focus, focus first on the Kishawaki watershed, and you're working in the Kishawaki watershed. So you are going to be improving that watershed. County has this big plan and they want to identify what's being worked on early soon. So do you, is, are they going to set up something to, to relate?
We can certainly comment on it. The county's aware of this project, I've actually presented it to them at the Kishawaki. Yeah, I, I presented the idea to the Kishawaki, um, River Ecosystem Partnership, which Scott leads.
Oh, okay, so.
They're familiar with it, everyone's, everyone in the Kish is excited about it that I've talked to. Uh, so, so they're aware of it, but yes, we could certainly could put it on that plan, which let's say you didn't want to go the mitigation route, we could do it through 319 funding or something like that, other grant.
But if you go the mitigation route, you wouldn't consider it in that, on, on plan then?
No, uh, well, it depends on, we, we certainly will include it in their planning, that's what the question is, yeah.
The other thing I will say is there had been meetings, as you know, with the current mitigation bank, we've been working very collaboratively with Nick Doc. And so they're very excited on opportunities that would allow them to kind of go ahead and, and, uh, work with us here. So again, that's showing intergovernmental cooperation and we have a need and then they were able to work in a way. But this is, this is a big project, so.
The only other thing I should mention to the board, just to be aware of it, is I'm aware of two other potential banks that are starting, private sector banks that are starting in the Kishawaki River watershed. So I know in the past there have been discussions about the whole of district and competition and things like that. So I'm just making you aware of it.
Were these projects happening simultaneously? And is that bad for the river or good for the river?
No, it's good for the resource, I mean, I'm in favor.
Bring it on, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's pretty exciting, I mean, it's harder to get excited about new stairs and roofs and stuff.
Well, we gave way of all the funding.
Thank you, thank you to both groups.
Yeah, thank you.
So you're good with what's presented here?
Thank you, all right. We'll begin, let's take a look at the agenda items for September 23rd. If you have any objections or anything you want to highlight? Oh, and I didn't see anything. Don't talk to me, anybody. And are we okay to go with the agenda as posted? As it will be posted? All right. Good. All right, executive director support, Les, what you got for us?
What do I have? I have a few things for you here. So, uh, first of all, thank you, uh, Trustee Leahy, you were at the Water Forum last evening. Uh, Gabe was there, Zach was there, uh, from our team to, you know, share, uh, information about the district and great display board on the projects that were going on. So it was a good full house, there's always a wonderful, so if you ever get an opportunity forward in the future to go, I highly recommend that. Um, of course, as you know, we had a great meeting, uh, with both boards. Thank you so much for, uh, leaning into that and, and working, they're very excited. And there's a lot of opportunities you can see here, and this, we build that collaboration, um, it's going to help us move forward in some of these projects.
What's nice is how many of the foundation board haven't been, that hadn't been to either location.
Yeah.
So that was, yeah.
You had seen, um, again, uh, we did do a tour for the McHenry County Historical Society to come over to the Kennedy Way Station. And they have since followed up with some communication thoughts of ideas and they're going to stay engaged as we go forward, um, with our Forward to 2040 Plan. Um, there was an article that was in the Woodstock Independent I shared that was done, um, on, on the building and given a little bit of history there, so.
You didn't tell us the building was haunted before you invited us for this tour.
Well, right, so that, we're not, we have no evidence that we've seen there, but you know, you never know. And I haven't spent a night there, so I can't. But, um, so appreciate that. Um, in the same night that we had a meeting last month, uh, we had staff members, Caitlin and Shauna did attend the McHenry County Historical Preservation Commission, who convened like we had done many years ago with all the different historical groups. And they had Landmark Illinois there present to talk about some grant opportunities. And so that was great just to be part and hear the conversation. And of course, um, they shared with them about the Forward to 2040 Plan and, and what we would be doing. Um, let's see here, what else do I have?
Their, their group, they sent something, the historical group, and they were talking about a list of, uh, ideas. Was there supposed to be an attachment or were they just talking about getting together to come up with a list?
So there's a list, there was a list of just different thoughts of, of kind of, they did a whole, uh, listing of different things. Programs, it was a separate attachment.
Okay, I did, I, I was able to see it, if you could forward that to me.
Um, let's see, the other, uh, there was a, yesterday, the continuance of the ZBA meeting on the solar farm. And I will say our correspondence that, uh, was sent over and, and we had that. It did go to the county board, to the administrators and to the ZBA. And so we did work through kind of at the 11th hour, the ZBA did not get the communication passed through their internal structure. Um, but that got rectified before the hearing, and so they're working on some of their internal processes there. Um, but anyhow, it was referred, uh, it was brought up multiple times by many members of the ZBA. Uh, and there is some confusion as well when they spoke, again, just clarification, in McHenry County, we're the McHenry County Conservation District, and yes, the McHenry County Conservation District did do an oak study. There is also the Lake and McHenry County Soil and Water Conservation District. And so there is confusion about which entity, and so as they're talking, kind of who said what and that. So how we solve that one, I don't know, it's just continued education in the space. But, um, they did refer that, they did also then, uh, made mention of the communication to where, I think when the district speaks, there's a lot of focus on, there's, we'll send them, they did bring up that, and also Army of Illinois, it's tree protection for the governor. And so therefore, uh, we shouldn't be cutting down trees. And then we get back to the, the district, we love trees, we do love trees, we want to save trees, but we're not commenting on projects that are legally outside of our, our jurisdiction. So, um, that was that. And, and then today, we had the Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Preserve Districts, we met, we were talking about legislative successes that we had this past year, hearing about, obviously, the, the work that all of our surrounding, because we had a great win last fall with all the propositions that were passed, both in King County, Lake County, McHenry County, DuPage, and the work that they're doing. And we happened to host the meeting in the DuPage's new, uh, Wildlife Resource Center. And I'm talking about, this is a field trip that the board should go as we begin that 40 to 2040 plan should take. A $30 million facility where, um, a visitor center, but also our education and marketing staff went to, with a sneak peek there, um, where they have, where our Wildlife Resource Center is kind of more, um, obviously we take care of the animals and the, the species at concern. But, uh, theirs is a front, forward facing, um, so behind glass, you can see the rooms where they intake the animals. You can come in, but it's a very interactive, um, beautiful facility. It was about, uh, for their project, a third of it was raised financially by a family that gave donations and intended, and had that for quite some time. The rest came from, um, grants and funding and legislative dollars. And then the other remainder came from, um, uh, obviously, or reissue bonds and, and the funding.
Where was the location again?
This one, uh, they are in, um, it's in Glen Allen, and it's the Willabrook Forest Preserve. It's not open to the public yet, so we got a sneak peek, they're looking in October, hopefully they'll have it all done. But, um, again, just when we start to look or you tour, have the opportunity to see all the wonderful things in the list that we have on deferred maintenance. And then you go to these other neighboring agencies and you see the assets that they've been able, um, is there something I want, as we looked at our 20 to 40 in, in the vision to 2071, what is it that we need here in McHenry County? And what makes us, because we've done some amazing, so the Nipper Sink meandering, a. What is it that we need here in McHenry County and what makes us, because we've done some amazing, we've seen the Never Sink Meandering, a lot of great work. But, um, again, we have great facilities too, but just to open up that there are some some projects. And they do the the muscle. That's another facility. They have a whole, uh, stream center.
We're picking up the vibe from the Board of Trustees. We would love to go see it.
Right.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think the board should go take a look at that. And we do kind of offsite, you'll jump and bring the foundation with us too. We can do another joint. And then you got the news too with the actual McHenry County, October second, we have, uh, several of you attending that. Uh, both President Everard and Secretary Zeller and Trustee Brady, um, and roaring twenties. Um, the great news came out, we got our economic impact, uh, from the state of Illinois. Uh, and when you look and you break down, because we've been reviewing those numbers, not only did we see an amazing increase in McHenry County, but when you go a little bit further based on the assets in the counties that are above us and what's been added, McHenry County is doing an amazing job. And so again, kudos to the board and staff, the community, uh, for the great work that's happening. And, um, and so that'll be a really great celebratory event. And then there are still several of you who are going to the open lands in New Little Luncheon. That is in October. We've got a few seats still available, so, um, I believe on that one I have uh, as an Everard and, uh, everything that moved down is is attending.
Which is due on that one?
And that date is Friday, the Friday the seventeenth. This is the Chicago Hilton. From eleven to and I'm going to extend to the foundation too.
Should October?
October seventeenth.
Yeah, Thursday.
And then, uh, Caitlin and I will go next week at NRPA. Send everything out and then, uh, and then I'm out. I'll go pick up my son Chris from PCT. He will have completed his journey.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
How many miles?
Two thousand six hundred and whatever. Eight pairs of shoes, eight tires, eight pair of tires.
He's going to sleep now.
No, he wants to go hiking when we get out there like he hasn't hiked enough.
Oh, geech.
So anyhow, um, I'll get, but we'll have more of it next week. I'll be set on the twenty third, so I will not be here for the meeting, but it'll be facilitated and. You got else for the adults? Wow, I guess.
Well, I think the county's initiative for this water good plan is really huge. It's really huge. I mean, they're this is going to involve the whole county. You have two subgroups or it's the Fox River watershed. And then you have the Kishwaki watershed, but they are going to be improving, uh, the possibility of or improving sustainability of our aquifers throughout the county. And during that process, they'll be doing restoration through the county, which also is beautification throughout the county. And I actually see an economic value that there's a lot of value added by their initiative. Be it for restoration, uh, be it, uh, you know, for environment and habitat and and those things, but it's also a value added that you are going to be leaving, living in a county where your probably land values are going to be higher as well, because it's going it's going to be very striking as far as I understand it. So it's something to really uh, focus on a little bit. And so I, I think where the Water Forum comes out uh, with a tape of the presentation that happened last night, I'd really encourage everybody to listen to it. It's it's impactful, very impactful.
Okay, can we go trustee?
Well, Heather and I was just thinking about, yeah. Go ahead. No, well, we went to the McHenry Lake County Soil and Water Conservation. Scott was there and he gave us just a little flavor. And I really wanted to go last night, but by the time I got off the train, it was it was delayed. I I missed that. If I missed the four fifteen, it's anyways, um, and I'll let Heather chime in too, but, um, it was at their, you know, location, um, which is actually the headwaters of Kishwaki River, which I did not know. And it was a great fall gathering and they, you know, took and we visited the the pathways where they were showing their different wildlife. There's a lot of monitoring wells going on and Scott was showing that they're monitoring, um, because the county is on the aquifers as you mentioned. And then there was a slake presentation, um, showing the difference between soil that's wetland and soil that's tilled a lot. And they were running it through these blast tubes and the soil that was tilled a lot would fragment and get into the groundwater, whereas the soil that was already compacted for wetland and wetland mitigation was so tight that it would capture and filter and only, you know, nothing would go into the water. It would, it would act as a huge filter. So the slake presentation was so neat for, and then, um, they were also mentioning to come to the Water Forum because they were going to talk about them, but I'll let Heather chime in too.
It was a fun evening. Yeah, it was really nice. And Scott showed us the monitoring wells and he partners with I think USGS on that data. And he was saying that year over year, the levels are going down for groundwater in the county long term. And yeah, that's what they're seeing. And so.
And that's all over the country.
Uh, yeah, and everything that you're describing that that tied to economic value, it's you're right. It's really important and something to focus on.
Well, then, you know, Wisconsin, I think it was Waukesha County, which is not contiguous to the water, doesn't touch Lake Michigan. They approved where they can get Lake Michigan water.
Really?
Yeah, and that's just, you know, that's just been not supposed to be, that's not supposed to happen. And, you know, that's going to shut down. I mean, there's not going to be other counties. I mean, we don't touch Lake Michigan. We're never going to get like Michigan waters. So we've got to be responsible for our own groundwater, our own groundwater.
Those monitoring wells are incredible. Yes, it was the University of Illinois, the Conservation District and the county. I I'm only, my well is only one thousand feet from one of the test wells. And I can go on the internet and I can see, um, how far it dropped, drops during a, you know, drought. When it starts restoring itself and I, it's just live time. Yeah, it's a live time on your well. And when and whenever some young person comes to me and they want to build a house in McHenry County says, you better know about your aquifer. You better know what water is available. Tools are there. It's just incredible.
Oh, white.
So next on the twenty third, so just as two things too that you'll have in your packet, everything's been uploaded to Session Lab. Um, the proposal and all the detail, the contracts came in on the forward to twenty forty plan. So that has been posted. So thank you, John. Legal work through all that contract. Um, so that is all present. Um, and then the only last piece that we're waiting is the auditors will be making a presentation, um, on the twenty third. And we're still waiting. There's a post in the committee yet? Okay.
I just wanted you to.
Okay, so you will have uploaded. We will get that taken care of you tonight. The first thing in the morning, you'll have the electronic version of the audit. And then, um, we'll have a physical one to give you. Um, and so if you want a physical one before once you receive them, we'll have somebody kind of let you know and buy a big one out.
Sneak peek, but I'm sure no major findings. No. Thank you.
Yeah, the delay was more, unfortunately, um, they had sent communication out to several attorneys. They have to get their feedback. And there was some delay in trying to work that through. So we got all of that. Um, and so that's really what they have a delay of us. So, um, and then the finances, thank you for your flexibility in moving things up because we had to move everything up a week earlier and we generally just don't close out a month that fast. So but we'll be, you'll be all good with all the information. So.
Are there any public comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, um, can we, uh, have an adjournment and move into executive session? Motion to adjourn?
We need to first, uh, make a motion to go into executive session. We do need to be specific on the reason why. So if you could.
Is there, yes, is there a motion to go into executive session pursuant to C five, just lease of real property and two C twenty one, review of closed session minutes of the Open Meetings Act of five Illinois CS one twenty slash one F S. So who's the whip manning? The second, second round?
Secretary Zeller. Yes, Cindy Brady. Yes. Vice President Ozark?
Yes.
Cindy Lee. Yes. President Erard.
Yes.
There's no action after executive session. We make it up.
Thank you. We all.
You do a roll call?
Roll call for the, um, regular meeting.
President Everard.
Here.
President Ozark.
Here.
Secretary Zeller?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
That works here. Yay, here, that works. Uh, Trustee Leahy.
Yes.
There's a present to us.
Right.
All right.
I hear you speaking, so you're here.
Yeah, well, before we, uh, before we entertain a motion for adjournment, just keep in mind September eleventh, twenty four years. So it has a special day and of course, uh, the special news from yesterday is that there's a little tie. And so with that and the Packers kick off in fifteen minutes. Can't anymore. We'll stay longer.
I move to adjourn.
Second, hit their second run.
And Trustee Leahy.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yeah.
Cindy Brady. Yes, Vice President Ozark.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes.